Good evening. Welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Meeting of the Board of Education for Wednesday, September 25th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve?
Where will the agenda?
I hear a one. Do I have a two? Let's vote. Trustee Raymond. Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams. And I am a yes. And we have approved our agenda. Ms. Kair, have we any public comment regarding closed session items? We do not. So with that, let us recess to closed session. We will return at 6:00 PM. Action in closed section. And let us now go to trustee Raymond, who will be reading our district mission statement tonight.
Good evening, everybody. We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you, trustee Raymond. Now let me provide public comment instructions. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak blue form on the back table or via the Google form at www.cbb.k12.ca.us/publiccomment and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment, but we can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. And with that, let us go to item number four. It's our school report and recognitions, and I'm so happy to welcome Mr. Kenny Khan from Redwood High School.
Well, hey, good evening, everyone. President Kuziak, vice president and former Redwood teacher, Ms. Adams. Trustee Howard, trustee Raymond. Trustee worker tonight, and board member Said, that's right. Superintendent Amadi, Assistant Superintendent Chan, Assistant Superintendent Rashichi, and Assistant Superintendent Zamora. I'm Kenny Khan, principal at Redwood High School. This is one of the first times where I present at the beginning of the school year. Typically, I'm kind of in the middle pack or move to the springtime. So I figured I'd start with a couple of visuals on the front slide, not the Panther so much, but the beautiful kids on the left, which was a group of our seniors last year who were award recipients from the Keep Rising Up Awards. And I always figure to kind of start with that because that's the kind of culminating moment for Redwood, right? Is what they're able to overcome and achieve and persevere through. And so their recognition highlighted their outstanding academic achievements, leadership, and significant contributions that they made to our school community. Teachers, staff members, peers, and families that all witnessed their remarkable growth and perseverance. And you know, the award didn't only celebrate their successes of earning a high school diploma, but it also encouraged them to continue pursuing learning and personal growth, whether through further academic studies, professional development, or both. They are still ongoing true inspiration to our community, and we're confident that it's only the beginning of their journeys. We want them to keep learning, keep thriving, and keep on rising. In the top right corner, if you walk into Redwood High School, you'll be received by one of the warmest and collegial group of staff members. That community of care is our school, is a dedicated team that ensures the holistic support of every student. It includes our secretary registrar and our attendance technician, our school social worker, and school counselor, and teacher on special assignment for the Castro Valley Virtual Academy. Together, they create a strong network focused on students' academic success, emotional well-being, attendance, and personalized learning needs. This collaboration reflects our commitment to provide a nurturing environment where every student feels supported and empowered to thrive. I put this slide up every single year, not necessarily the visuals, but multiple programs that exist at our site. So Redwood High School, Castro Valley Virtual Academy, Counseling Rich Classroom, the Roy Johnson Adult Transition Program, our independent study, and intensive intervention in home hospital. And as a reminder, we provide alternative high school education and community-based programming to a diverse population of student learners, each with their own unique sets of strengths and areas of growth. And below are some of our amazing students in each of those programs who were nominated by teachers during a grading cycle as a student of the hex. I think personally of one student who walked out with the biggest Kool-Aid smile or school aid smile that they had ever had and told me that, you know, Mr. Khan, I've never been nominated for an academic recognition ever in my life, you know, in their junior year, and just the buy-in that they received as a result of that. That one trusted adult who had built that relationship with them, who nominated them, and they won. It means the world to our students, and it means the world to us. So tonight, I wanted to focus on school connectedness and looking at our California Healthy Kids survey for two years of the 2021-22 review along with 2023, highlighting trends in school connectedness and its impact on student well-being and academic performance. As we know, school connectedness is a key factor in student success as it reflects their sense of belonging and positive attachment to the school community. When students feel connected, they are more likely to attend regularly, engage academically, and make healthier choices, reducing involvement and risk factors. By fostering a strong relationship between students and staff and peers, we create a supportive environment where students feel valued and motivated to thrive. This was our fall first of the school year rally that are the visuals below in which every one of our programs were together talking about what Panther Pride was. As you can see, it also a little bit of a musical chairs, you know, competition going on. Even one of our teachers, who's actually president's name, Ms. Rogers, plays second, although she's number one in each of our hearts. All right. Wanting to talk a little bit about perception of fair treatment by, right? I'm pleased to report that the overwhelming majority of our students feel that teachers treat them fairly, which is a significant and positive reflection of the hard work and dedication of our staff. This high level of fairness is a significant and positive reflection of the hard work and dedication that they provide. Fostering trust and building a strong sense of school connectedness. And moving forward, it is important that we continue to support our teachers' ongoing professional development, sustain this strength, and also leverage it as we focus on other areas of continuous school improvement. By maintaining and expanding on these positive relationships, we can further enhance student outcomes and overall school. All right, our students' emotional connection to school. While a majority of students feel connected to our school, nearly a third do not feel particularly close to their peers or the broader school community, and a quarter report feeling disconnected from the school altogether. This presents an important opportunity for us to strengthen relationships across the campus. And at Redwood High School, we are committed to addressing this by exploring peer mentoring programs, expanding clubs, hosting more school-wide events, and fostering stronger school connections. Our staff also continues to focus on best practices for building strong teacher-student relationships, ensuring that every student feels seen, supported, and valued in our school community. These are some visuals of our revamped or continually building Redwood High School Wellness Center. So over the past three years, we've made significant strides in fostering student connectedness through our wellness and support services. At Redwood High School, 100% of new students have had one-on-one meetings with our school social worker upon entry, ensuring that every student is personally welcomed and supported. Additionally, 20% of our parents or guardians have established communication with our social worker, further strengthening the home-to-school partnership. More than half, 54%, of our students have participated in 30-minute sessions with our wellness teams, and 83 returning students have attended multiple sessions in the Wellness Center. These efforts of our ongoing commitment to providing mental health and emotional support ensure that students feel connected, valued, supported in their personal and academic journey. And it's also really nice and soothing in there. Check it out. Come on by. All right. As we look at our student happiness and school satisfaction. At Redwood High School, student happiness and school satisfaction are central to our mission. It is crucial for us to listen, ask, and act on the feedback we receive from our students to understand what will make them feel more content and more connected at our school site. We are committed to building more positive school culture initiatives that reflect their input. And to ensure this, we will continue to conduct site surveys for feedback, collect student input through forums, hold student focus groups as well. I will point out today, a lot of students and staff gave me a hard time because it was just like a student day or students dressed like adults day. I still dress like a principal because I have this board presentation meeting. Tomorrow is Eighties Day, so a lot of bright colors tomorrow. You can imagine. I have my bump box. I don't want to give away what my Halloween costume is going to be, so we'll just, we'll keep it there. We'll pin it for right now. But needless to say, these actions will guide our efforts to create an even more inclusive and supportive environment where every student can thrive. And then when it comes to our school safety. Back to school safety. A strong majority of our students feel safe at our school. Although small, we do recognize that a percentage of our students who do not feel safe at our school reinforces our continuance of safety measures and the importance of providing students with safety resources. Understanding their safety concerns and addressing them is imperative for us at Redwood High School. All right, a couple of visuals here. So in spring 2025, a team of teachers, counselors, and I will be attending a professional development through the California Continuation Education Association Plus. This organization is dedicated to advocating for the improvement of alternative education, including continuation in community-day schools. The CCEA Plus promotes the development of high-quality schools that support student achievement, high school diploma completion, preparation for the workforce, and a positive school environment. Through this professional development, we aim to enhance instruction and ensure that our students not only meet high school standards, but are equipped with the foundation for lifelong learning. Getting, I believe Mr. Hoffman is here today. Prior to RTI implementation, district-wide advisory was a program that actually Mr. Hoffman brought back to the school site. And so in similar fashion, what we're looking to do is have our teacher team or our faculty and staff team listen, learn, collaborate, build connections, and more importantly, always bring something. So actually, beginning tomorrow, we have our orientation in secondary programs for the Black program. And Black program at Redwood High School is going to be for a social, historical, and culturally initiative uniquely designed to address the specific needs and challenges of our Black students. The program focuses on teaching Black history from a Black perspective, providing students with a deeper understanding of their heritage and cultural contributions. Beyond academics, the Black program serves as a safe and supportive space where Black students can learn, grow, and connect with one another, and with Black students in our community. And this initiative plays a vital role in fostering a sense of belonging and empowerment among our students, strengthening their connection to both the school and their own identities. Okay. The plum. You can all zero in on that really beautiful purple shiny plum, okay? Superintendent Amadi came for a walkthrough a couple of weeks back as we're going through. Stopped by Mr. Hoffman's classroom to get a plum. I encourage all of you to come to Redwood High School for a class, for a school visit, but more importantly, to come check out the garden and see the amazing things that our horticulture class is doing. So the plum, right? I gotta get to the plum. Boom. It's hilarious when you're looking for it, but then you, then you was, okay. So at Redwood, we nurture our students not only through teaching and learning, but also through providing access to fresh, nourishing food. Students in Mr. Hoffman's social science class enjoy Satsuma plums grown right in our school garden, which is lovingly maintained by Mr. Hoffman and our horticulture students. Just this past Friday, a parent of a former student who regularly donates woodchips to support the garden stopped by to pick some plums and admired the back-to-school night social that we just held at the end of our first grading cycle. He expressed a heartfelt praise to Redwood's positive impact on his family and the broader community, reinforcing the strong connections that we continue to build. And below, you'll see a picture, you know, of Redwood High School students and alumni participating in a basketball game coached by Mr. Biagis and myself with our campus safety team officiating and members of our teaching and clerical staff keeping score. This event is a true reflection of Redwood's community coming together to support our students, and it's vital that we show up for one another with a student center focused because our students are the promise of what's to come. Through activities like this, we strengthen connections and create lasting bonds that will guide them well beyond their time at Redwood. So some key takeaways. Redwood students communicated high levels of fairness by teachers and staff, strong sense of safety, and most are happy attending our school. We will continue to increase student participation in after-school programs and activities and further foster our culture of belonging and emotional connection to the school. Through developing targeted interventions, engaging students' voices, and conducting site needs assessments, we aim to build longstanding supports for our current and future students to ensure that they continue or they connect to our school community because in the end, school connectedness truly matters. Without further ado, I believe this is where we have a student spotlight, but I'll pause in the meantime if there's any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Now our student board member Fatamaz Said will be recognizing our Redwood High School students of the meeting, I suppose.
Hi, thank you so much. The governance team along with Redwood High School are. Come up.
Estefani?
Estefani.
Stephanie, sorry.
The governance team along with Redwood High School are proud to honor Estefani Albello Viallo as an outstanding student. Since her arrival to Redwood High School last fall, Estefani has been nothing short of amazing in the classroom and on her report card. Estefani has earned high marks beyond the typical amount of credits one can achieve each hex semester. Estefani can be heard school-wide on Monday and Friday afternoons during the school announcements, supports the school community building efforts, and is a welcoming and supportive student aide in the main office. Redwood's facility and staff adore her. She is a bright light with great promise. She is the embodiment of Redwood Panther pride. Thank you, Estefani, for all your hard work and continued commitment to learning and growing. We appreciate you. The governance team along with Redwood High School are proud to honor Estefani.
Want to make sure it's Estefani? Estefani, would you like to recognize anyone in the audience or make a shout out to anyone? Yeah.
I'd like to thank Mr. Khan for giving me this award, and it's an honor to be here. I would like to thank Mr. Hoffman for always supporting me and telling me I can do this. He has been my biggest inspiration and the most helpful person with keeping my hopes up and maintaining my goals and reaching them. Thank you.
You so much. And now we can just go to the board if there are any comments that we'd like to hear from. Congratulations on making all of us ugly cry tonight. I'm, you know, usually I go last, but I just, I want, I just want to say, hold on to that family. You're lucky. And let's, let's go with our board comments.
Hello. Thank you so much, Mr. Hoffman, for that great presentation. Um, I actually learned, I did not know much about Redwood until now. I think this presentation really opened up my eyes to like a whole nother branch of another high school. And actually, some people in the picture that you had of the basketball, I know some people, I know Jordan, I used to have math class with him, really funny guy. But overall, I really like how you presented Redwood. I think it's a great school, and I think that what you guys are doing is really great. And congratulations to Stephanie. You have a beautiful family, and what you talked about, your family is so sweet. Thank you.
Estefani, I just want to say that the resilience in you just shines. Like, I mean, we're just meeting you. And I think it takes a lot of courage to stand up in a room of people who are just meeting you and share with us just kind of what your family is experiencing and the fact that you're really succeeding at school in the midst of all of that turmoil is really a credit, not just to you, but to the people who are holding you up. So it's remarkable. So I'm going to diverge a moment here. I'm an attorney outside of this room, and I have handled a couple guardianships in my life and, or in my career. And I know that, you know, there's always a goal to not separate the siblings. You know, and I mean, I know the reasons for that are extremely deeply rooted in your own like emotional development as a human being, you know. And just to have you hear you say that your siblings are reunited now is really, I'm really, I'm really happy for you and happy for them and your whole family that that is the case. And amazing for your sister to stand up as guardian, you know, for you guys. It's really, that's amazing. Not all kids are that lucky to have someone who's willing to take on that role. Sorry, this is, like I said, I'm going on this little tangent, but. And I'm just glad that we've got a school situation that is one that you can thrive in. So turning to Mr. Khan. I think every time you present, I'm, I don't know, I just, I love what you guys are doing up there. It sounds great. I, having a horticulture class in a setting where a lot of kids are probably struggling has got to be a really rewarding thing. There's nothing more, I think, symbolic than when you are struggling, looking down at the thing you've grown and being like, wait a second, I just made that happen, you know? It takes time, it takes patience, it takes consistency, it takes showing up, and then all of a sudden you have a plum, you know? If that isn't a metaphor for, you know, life of a student, I don't know what is. And I appreciated you taking the time tonight to go through the California Healthy Kids data with us as it applies to your school and some thought and reflection as to how it can inform, you know, everybody moving forward. So thank you, everyone, for being here tonight.
It's always fun to hear from you, I have to say. And I've always amazed at the number of diverse programs that you have up there. You know, we have all kinds of different, we have nine, now we have 9,500 students in the district, and they're all different, you know, they're all the same and they're all different, you know, they have different needs. And it's amazing the number of those needs that are met by Redwood. You know, what would we do if we didn't have Redwood? We'd be in a lot of trouble. So it's fantastic that you're up there. So thanks for all the work you're doing with all that. Really building a very tight, small community, and so that's terrific. So and I would say I've been around that garden up there for many years, and there are a lot of other schools that have gardens in the district, but clearly Redwood has always had the best garden. There's no contest, really. And finally, I'll just say, Estefani, thank you for your comments. I mean, those are probably the best comments and introduction of family we've ever heard, I think, here. So thank you.
Well, here is Redwood. Redwood, I think, as I was thinking about this, will probably always be my most favorite job I ever had. I loved Redwood. I cried when I left. And I just love you guys, and every time you come up here, I'm so happy. I'm like, oh, good, Redwood's up here. You know, I hope I get to see some of my old buddies. I really like in the beginning of your presentation, Principal Khan, they, I love the inclusiveness that you had, that all of those different programs with all of the different needs that you had all of the kids in the same room. That's really good, and that's a big push in the district now to have inclusiveness, something I always was advocating for when I was in the Counseling and Rich class at that time. A few of the stats that you were so willing to put up there, it occurred to me, like the 32% who didn't feel close to the people at this school, I think one of the reasons is, you know, Redwood doesn't just have the same kids for four whole years. Kids come and go, many of them not coming until their junior, maybe even their senior year. So it takes them a little time to feel close to people. They're not going to feel close to people the moment they get there. So I think that might be part of the stats for that. Or why that is that way, or the smaller percent that they didn't feel safe. It's because they're not going to feel safe till they know who the people are there. And then the really cool program you have, the Black program, which I was writing down all the words for the acronym, and you said, you said it starts October 1st, but then, I don't know, the dates then said 12/3. So I was a little confused because I thought maybe I could go sometime and kind of observe what's happening with that. I'd love to see it.
So we have a online orientation that's beginning tomorrow that has been sent out to each of the secondary programs. And then at the different secondary sites, it will have different start dates.
Okay.
So for Redwood, it'll start on October 1st.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And board members, we can share the video with you all so you all can get a feel for what's happening with the Black program.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay. That would be really good. And Stephanie, you made me cry. It was so sweet and so lovely, and I am, I, when I heard that the three of you just were able to get together in the last few days, that was it. I was like, oh, that's so sweet. So congratulations on your award, and you deserve it, and, you know, thrive at Redwood and beyond. Thank you all.
Well, Mr. Khan is just an amazing leader. The connections that you make with students is just incredible, and that's what it takes. Mr. Hoffman, the plum was amazing. But I have to say, every time you see Mr. Hoffman, he's building relationships with kids. He's taught, he has high expectations. He's supporting them. He's real. Like, this is what's going to get done, and we're going to get it done. And I can see why, Estefani, you said what you said about that connection and that importance of that. I also want to say, looking at the, what we call the CHICS survey, the California Healthy Kids Survey. is a really important thing to do because it's anonymous. And it's pretty, I'm actually always impressed with how it turns out for, for Redwood. Almost every single time it shows that kids have, I know there are certain percentage and we always want to change that. But there's a high percentage of kids who feel connected. And I remember, I think the last time, one of the questions was, like, how, how do you know that? And, and the response from kids were, when I'm not at school, the next day when I come back, people ask me, how are you? There's no blame, there's no shame. There's like, you're here, we're glad to see you. What are you doing? What can I do to support you? And that's the, really the spirit of, of that entire school, the amazing staff that you have. And then under, just unbelievably incredible kids who have challenges, yet have persevered and are smart, brilliant, and doing a great job. Stephanie is an example. You're just phenomenal, I think. Family, you said it. Hold on to that family. But you, just the way you look at that and how grateful you are to other people is why everybody, we are all grateful to have you. And this world is lucky to have you. So, thank you. And your mom, I can't even say, but you're just an example, a model. So, thank you so much. Great presentation.
Kenny, I, you, again, you were the first principal I ever got to hire. Uh, that was my, so I'm very proud of that vote. But I, I really, you know, when I think about Redwood High School, it truly is about our mandate of all means all. And this is fighting for every student in our district to, to, to ensure that they have the pathway they need to be successful. And thank you what you've done there. And I'm so happy the garden has come back to life, uh, post-COVID. I know, um, during COVID it took a hit, but I will, I will make, I'm trying to get up there. I will walk up the hill. Uh, it, this is my neighborhood school. Stephanie, again, I, you know, listening to you, I, I'm, I'm going back east to see my sister and my family. And I can't wait to see my sister. And thank you for reminding me about the power of that connection. And I cannot wait to be at your graduation. And we're going to celebrate you and all that you've accomplished. The Redwood High School graduation, I think for many of the board, is such a highlight and it's such a celebration of, of, of a lot of hard work. So thank you for sharing your truth and your story tonight. That was really powerful. Thank you. Thank you. You were dismissed.
Well, before I'm dismissed, because I still had a little bit of airtime on this microphone. You know, programs are driven by the people behind them and Redwood High School is fortunate to have an outstanding team of educators who truly enrich our students' experience. Ms. Maseri teaches English and art while also hosting our after-school music club. Ms. Natali, yeah, clap it up. Ms. Natali transitions swiftly, swiftly from Cache Valley High School and now leads our journalism, literature, and film and world reading classes. Mr. Hasselbeck takes on social science classes and food courses as well. Ms. Jones teaches science in Cyber High. Mr. Hoffman, as already mentioned, wears many hats, teaching social science classes, credit recovery, physical education, horticulture, after-school intervention. As you already learned, Mr. Vegas teaches math and coaches basketball. He's currently leading our Dia de los Muertos activities with closely responsive teaching and emotional support for the grieving process. Uh, Ms. Nguyen is our special education teacher and case manager, ensuring students get the resources that they need. Ms. Rogers, our new counseling and rich classroom teacher, has made an immediate impact through her therapy-based program. And these educators deserve our deepest appreciation for their incredible contributions to our school community. So thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and now Fatima, this is the first time we're, we're, we get to see each other in a meeting. I missed our last meeting. It's great to see you here. And it, it sounds like you have an update for us. Welcome. Fatima is our, uh, our school, sorry, our student board member. And we hear from our student board member every week, every time we have a meeting to hear what's happening around the district.
Hey. So, at the high school, our homecoming dance is this Saturday. And before that, on Friday, is our assembly and our parade where we showcase our homecoming dance, skit, and flow that the student body has been working on this entire week. Many of our sports are also in session right now, including volleyball, water polo, and football, which we also have our homecoming football game on Friday. And that's pretty much it for what's going on in the high school. And at the middle schools, Creekside, they have their first cross-country meet today, actually, at the St. Leandro Marina. They also have the chess club in session right now. And their makeup picture day is September 27th. And they have a few spots remaining for their Washington DC trip for their eighth graders. And that's pretty much it of what I have for schools right now.
So I would love to know, what's the theme of homecoming this year?
Oh, it's actually Mario Kart.
What? So the different, so the different grades are competing on that somehow? How?
Yeah, so it's like, um, each grade is like different, um, different, like,
Someone's Mario, someone's Luigi.
No, it's more like game variations, like in Mario Kart has like game variations and there's like, like, yes, exactly. And like, it's like Haunted Mansion, Cheap Cheap Beach, like that's the theme for tomorrow is Cheap Cheap Beach. And like Cheap Cheap Beach, and that's what the seniors are. So it's like you dress up in like, in like beach wear and like bright colors and like all that stuff. And that's like what we'll be doing entire week.
I'm scared you're about to use Skibidi in a sentence with it.
We don't use those.
Well, I am, I'm excited to hear who, which class wins.
I am too.
Thank you for your update. Uh, and now let's go to our superintendent.
Yeah, I had a little presentation that Ms. Kaya's going to get on. And, um, next slide, thank you. I always put these and she makes it beautiful. I wanted to just share a little bit about this whole idea of professional learning communities because it's happening all around our district. And just as a reminder, again, there are the different pillars that really hold it all together. Number one is that we accept learning in our professional learning communities as staff, as teachers, as the fundamental purpose of our school. And so our willingness to examine our practice in light of the impact it actually makes on kids. And the second pillar is we're committed to working together to achieve our collective purpose. So, all of us working together, let's say in our grade level, in our department meetings and collaboration, we cultivate a collaborative culture. And if you think about collaboration, it really comes from co and labor, right? Working together, realizing and recognizing that they are all our students regardless of where they sit in class. And then the last one is that we assess our effectiveness on the basis of results rather than intentions. We all want, always want to do a really great job, but we look at what's the outcome in the end. Individuals, teams, and schools seek, they use it, relevant data and information, and then use that information to actually plan their instruction and change what they need to change to make sure that there's continuous improvement. I say that because this is something that's happening at all of our schools in one way or another. And I think that's, it's been a big push. And I want to thank Ms. Rashichi for, and Educational Services for really doing a lot of training in this area to get us to this point. Because it's not an easy thing to do. It takes time. Next, so a beautiful example of it is this. This is collaboration. The other day I was just, um, walking by to talk to somebody here and I heard lots of chatter. And when I went in, there were lots of teachers sitting together, excited, working together, collaborating. This is the pre, preschool TK and K collaboration. So different grades, teachers coming together to see how one is aligned with the next grade level and the next grade level. This is really powerful. So it's general ed and special ed teachers working together and they go over, they actually are discussing learning foundations for preschool transitional kindergarten and kindergarten. When you don't have that connection and then alignment, then when you look at what you're teaching, it's, if it's disconnected, we don't know where kids are starting and where they need to end. So that was just a beautiful thing that Ms., uh, Ms. Glute was facilitating. Next, I wanted to just acknowledge that our awesome teacher of the year is Ms. Gretchen Venkatesh. And I'm really excited because she is an incredible, incredible resource teacher. And I'm just really excited. I hope that they're smart enough to select her as the county teacher of the year, but I don't get to get a vote. But my vote is for her. So it is October 3rd at 5:30 and I know, um, we have tickets that we have a, a few of us going. So really excited to see that. Just, uh, sharing a couple of other things, Art Inc., which had, they, they have their, um, uh, art show, the, at Adobe Art Center. And these are the dates, uh, it's every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, three weeks in a row, starting tomorrow. You can go and see the beautiful artwork by community members. And there's, um, you can get more information. But basically, they had a reception on Saturday from 3:00 to 5:00 and they had music and poetry. And then on, uh, Saturday, October 12th, they take all the artwork. If you like any of the artwork that's for sale, you can also purchase it. Next, this is, uh, the Arts Foundation. Their next show is Magic Things. And I hear it's a pretty good, uh, opportunity, especially as, uh, the Arts Foundation is trying to do more things where you can take your children and not just adult shows. Those is, this is like one of them. And you can go on, uh, the website and purchase tickets. And then the Week of Administrators, um, is October 13th to 19th, and we have the resolution next time. But I wanted to just share a little bit about just their amazing work. All of, you know, uh, Mr. Khan is an example. Uh, our administrators work closely with their, their team, their teachers, and classified to support kids. Basically, there's a lot of work that gets done behind the scene. They work long, long hours. And, and work together as, to support every single child. I, just sharing some numbers, we have about 9,500 students. We have 500, almost, so this is FT, means full-time equivalent. So 541 full-time, there are a lot more people than 541, because some people are part-time. But if you just look at full-time equivalents, we have 540 certificated, just teachers, psychologists, counselors, all of the folks who have cert, uh, who are certificated. And then we have classified secretaries, child nutrition, accounting, all of these, uh, folks that support. 367. And we have 61.8, almost 62 administrators, which is less than 7% of our team is administrators. So, but everyone working together as a team is really what makes it happen. And I just want to thank our administrators as well as our certificated and classified teachers, classified to working, for working together to, to make it the best place for kids. So, that is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. As I, as I like to tell people, we're not running a one school, a, a one classroom schoolhouse here, Little House on the Prairie. So, thank you administrators. Uh, with that, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Great time to take photos, um, and to say hello to everyone. So we'll be back in five minutes. Great time to take photos and to say hello to everyone. So we'll be back in five minutes. We are back from recess and it's item eight. And this is when we welcome our labor partners from the California Schools Employees Association to say a few words. Are they here tonight online? Nope. Is there anyone from the Castro Valley Teachers Association? No. So they will not be speaking with us tonight. And now we have public comment for items not on the agenda and we do have one speaker card from Carlos Archuleta. Welcome to the meeting, Carlos. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, one of the first time seeing you guys, I often speak at a lot of boards. Thank you for your time. I unfortunately don't have a script tonight. I usually come with a script, but this is about my daughter. My daughter has special needs. It's a real reason why I'm into advocacy work and stuff. However, I think with the big heart, as I was speaking to Mr. Kuziak before, I think you guys tried to do something positive and give children second chance and came up with the, it's called a progressive punishment policy. Well, however, that protects predators. My daughter, who has problems speaking, she's on the spectrum. She can't advocate on her behalf and oftentimes becomes the easy target, easy, the person bullies go after. This kept happening all last year and all this year, and we tried to turn a blind eye because we just came to Castro Valley and we just wanted to play nice with everybody, especially my daughter. And it escalated until he touched my daughter the day before yesterday in PE class. Because you have your progressive policies, he was given another chance where he continued to act a fool later that day in another situation. And then the following day, my daughter was reprimanded because when he continued to harass her after sexually assaulting her, she stood up for herself and in a kind of a toxic positivity environment, the response to that is what's judged because we need to play nice and be nice. When that kid should be expelled. And being a victim of of sexual violence myself as a child who ran away in the eighth grade, I understand when you have to be around that person continuously and you have to justify their behavior while your behavior is criticized. That's some of the most difficult stuff that you can overcome. And I think that the policy, when it was created, was created with great intentions of it's not make a prison pipeline, school to prison pipeline. It's not get expelled on the, you know, on the first chance. And oftentimes that's, you know, that minorities, poor kids that get kind of thrown under the bus like that. So I think that, you know, when we try to do stuff like that, we come with the big heart. But sometimes we're seeing that the implementation of that is what needs work. And right now, my daughter currently has to sit in a classroom with a predator. And it will be her response to that predator that will be judged. And I think that should be something that you guys should be all over social media about. Like when I see you guys talking about flags and counties or wars in the Middle East or Ukraine or wherever it is. Well, this is right here in your backyard. If you guys are so passionate about saving children in other districts, then I welcome you for this, this passionate thing that we get to speak out on. Thank you so much.
Carlos, thank you again for coming to speak tonight. Now we are going to look at our consent agenda. This is where we will consider approving the following items. And what motion do I have? A motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. Now let us vote. Student Board Member Fatima.
I vote yes.
Trustee Raymond.
I vote yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We have passed our consent agenda. We are now going to go to our reports, discussion, and action items. Our first one is on the 2024 Bond Financing Program Overview. And I had a brief moment to chat with our presenter during the recess and he said it's going to be a very exciting presentation. So I'm looking forward to that.
Yes, it is. We have Blake from KNN Public Finance who will go through the presentation. And this is regarding our 2015 general obligation bond. So I'm going to turn it over to Blake.
Thank you. I will do my best to follow the Redwood High presentation and the awards. End of the day, this is bond finance. But I think, you know, at the crux of the presentation, really what this involves is the district's continued focus on fiscal stewardship of taxpayer dollars. This board has been very proactive for all of its prior bond measures in looking at opportunities to refinance when they present themselves. And we find ourselves at yet another window of time where some of the outstanding bonds are reaching their call date and can be refinanced for interest cost reduction and thereby taxpayer savings. On the first page is just a broad overview of the district's history with voter-approved bond measures, going all the way back to the late nineties, all the way up to the most recent measure G passed in June of 2016. All of these bond measures have issued, are drawn down, the bond authorization that voters approved. And those monies have been dedicated for capital improvement projects. The table at the top, you can see for each measure, the election it was passed, how much was approved by voters, what remains outstanding. And for each respective measure, the final maturity or payoff date of the outstanding bonds. And then the colorful chart at the bottom really is an illustrative look at all of the bonds that were sold incrementally over time and those that have been refinanced in the boxes that lie below. So as, as I mentioned earlier, the focus of this is on a refinancing opportunity, really focused around the 2015 bonds that already refinanced some of the original debt. They are yet again approaching their call date, which is the issuer's opportunity to call the bonds or refinance, recognizing that when they were originally sold, there's a call protection period, which is granted to investors. For the 2015 refunding bonds, that call date is on February, February 1st of 2025. So anytime within 90 days of that February 1st date, the bonds can be refinanced on what's called a currently callable basis, meaning that there's no escrow or holding period. It means that the proceeds of the new refunding bonds will be deposited for a short period of time in liquid investments and ultimately will pay off, those proceeds will pay off the old bonds on February 1st, leaving behind it the new debt service obligation, which carries the lower interest cost. And that's when taxpayers start realizing savings on an annual basis. Refinancing is very similar to refinancing a home mortgage with some, some key differences. When you refinance a general obligation bond, you do not reset your term. So you're, you're, you're not paying for another 30 years. You have to maintain the same final maturity date as the original bonds that were sold. It's solely for purposes of interest cost savings. And it, and to be honest, it's not a benefit for the district itself. It's for the community that approved the bonds originally. Based on the current interest rate environment, the current estimated savings totals over $2.5 million. I already explained at the bottom of the slide what a current refunding is. There are situations where an issuer would look to advance refund. For instance, in late 2020 and into 2021, where we were at historically low rates, there was expectations that rates were going to rise. Some agencies were looking to advance refund to try and lock in savings now in advance of the interest rate run-up that we saw through 2022, 2023. That's not what we're talking about here today, but for information's sake, I'll go ahead and I just wanted to share that. This is a great slide. And again, it really does demonstrate that longstanding history that this district and board have had on fiscal stewardship and the importance of maintaining that promise to voters to minimize the cost of borrowing for bonds that have been approved. At this point, the district has refinanced its outstanding general obligation, general obligation bonds five separate times, saving taxpayers nearly $16 million over the life of those bonds. With this potential 2024 refunding effort, that would be the sixth opportunity. And based on the total amount of estimated savings and the percentage of present value savings relative to bonds refunded, this could represent one of the most impactful refundings that the district has had over this span. Just a quick update on the market and, you know, there's changes hour by hour, day by.
Good question. Last slide.
Please.
Oh, good. I just wanted to make sure I understood the difference between actual savings and present value savings. Is, is that adjusted for inflation over time? Is that why it's lower, the present value savings?
The present value calculation is a determination of what it would mean in today's dollars. And so you, the actual savings are what is actually realized, the, the difference between the old debt service and the new debt service. But as you go out, you know, five, 10-plus years, those dollars on the out years, we discount them back to today because, you know, that's what we think is a more impactful calculation. The way we discount it is we use the aggregate borrowing cost of the bonds themselves or what's called the arbitrage yield as a discount factor. And so the longer you go out, the larger the discount factor applies to those dollars. And so that's why you have a lower present value savings figure than you would the actual or nominal savings figure.
Thank you.
Yeah, a little bit about the market and I was saying, you know, things change hour by hour, day by day, week by week. So at the time I submitted this presentation to get it on the agenda, we've, we've continued to see changes. I think most notably in regards to the anticipated Fed rate cuts. At the September FOMC meeting, the Fed decided to cut their Fed funds rate by 50 basis points or 0.5%. Really symbolizing the first rate cut that we've seen in a number of years as some of the inflationary pressures seem to be easing. The market's response to that was quite favorable, one, that was more of a rate cut than was anticipated. And it also marks a trend of a declining interest rate environment. And so that is favorable for treasuries, municipal bonds, and the market as a whole. So really where we're at is we're seeing, as we get towards the end of 2024, is a decreasing interest rate environment, which is only going to be more impactful and more favorable for this potential refunding effort. Hopefully actually securing more taxpayer savings than even what's included in this presentation. There is some uncertainty and volatility around the election timeframe. In communication with district staff, this refunding is expected should the board provide direction to move forward to actually price and lock in savings and interest rates prior to the election happening, which I think is a good thing. It just takes some of the uncertainty out of what comes following the election out, you know, results and outcomes. And then on the chart on this slide, you know, while we're not sitting at the historically low rates that we were, saw through 2021, late 2020, we still are sitting in a interest rate environment that is below the historical average for municipal bonds. And as I mentioned, it's continuing to improve right now, which is great.
Ask a question. Yeah. So why not wait? Why not wait? It's, I mean, I'm no apple, I studied economics, but we don't know what the Fed Chair is going to do. But I think one might be reasonable to think that there might be additional cuts in interest rates over the next few months or a year or so.
Waiting is always an option. Once you get past the February 1st call date, you start having the value of the call option starts decreasing. And the reason that that happens is because there's accrued interest that happens on a day-by-day basis. Each day that will go by, the, the refinancing of callable bonds will have that much less of an impact. And so it is a decreasing value option past the call date. So I think really what we're talking about, i- if we're looking at maximizing the value is sometime between now and February 1st. I think at least the, the conversations with district staff have really been focused on what we know today is more impactful than what we don't know tomorrow. We have the, a really big election with a lot of buzz, whether it's good, bad, indifferent, a lot of buzz around it. And the, the aftermath of that election, again, it's, it's from a market perspective, there's a lot of uncertainty and unknowns. So if the board feels.
Pretty much just anxious all the time. I mean, is there a notion of like a break-even point, right? Like, let's say we see another dramatic fall of interest rates after we do this. Would there ever be a reason to say, oh, let's do this again?
So the, the plan right now, and I'll cover it at the very last slide, is the timeline is to position this refunding to be ready to go to market as early as, I think it's October 17th, if I'm not mistaken, as a pricing date. Okay, 22nd. Sorry about that. And, and really that's all predicated off of coming back to the board on October 9th for approval. And that would be the earliest time to go to market. And again, it is positioned in front of the election. So if at that time, the level of savings surpasses and really kind of the minimum benchmarks that, that we've set, which right now it, it largely is. We, the minimum benchmarks that the district has historically looked at is a 3% present value savings as it relates to the percentage of bonds refunded. Right now, we're sitting at over 9%. We're sitting at over $2.5 million of savings, which again is one of the more impactful refunding efforts that has been considered by the district. So I think that those occupy the primary focus and not trying to bet the market. And so I think that those will be the factors that will keep a lens on as we kind of get into October and closer to that October 22nd date. If that's fair.
Was it Milton Keynes who said in the future we're dead? Yeah, you only know what you know now. Okay.
Yeah, so I, I kind of threw that explanation, covered a lot of the highlights on this slide. Again, you know, the economic metrics here do look very strong. And so the plan would be, as mentioned, come back on October 9th with refinancing documents for the board's consideration. If approved, we would proceed with securing ratings and actually going to market and locking in rates and savings. And then once the transaction officially closes, which is approximately two weeks after the pricing date, we would come back with the final pricing results and share those publicly. You know, hopefully celebrating what would be a successful refunding transaction.
So I, this is a presentation. Are you still looking for some non-verbal indications from us about how we feel about this? Very good. I just want to make sure because this sounds good to me, what I've heard. Okay, thanks. Trustee Raymond.
Just want to ask one question about the timeline. You mentioned potential volatility around Election Day. And I see that this, this timeline has our potential transaction closing on Wednesday, November 6. Theoretically, if we were to move forward with this, is there a way to move up that closing date?
We could consider that. I think it's important though to differentiate. The volatility in the market around the election is somewhat neutralized once we've locked in rates and priced the bonds. The transaction closing is more logistically paperwork signing. There is some transfer of funds, but any upheaval following the election would, would be all but neutralized because that part is done.
I share your angst, trustee Raymond.
I know you do. Okay, thank you. I just, out of due diligence, I thought I should ask.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much for being here. That was really informative. Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta see a great presentation before, so I enjoyed it. Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Do we need to take a quick break? No, everyone's here for this next one. Sorry. We are going to now have an update on elementary reading and report cards.
Ms. Ms. Glute is here and we're gonna see if we can get Ms. Rashid back. But Ms. Ms. Glute, I just showed the picture that you shared with me from the collaboration. It was so beautiful. Such a great job you did.
Do you want me to wait or can I get started?
You can go ahead.
Okay. So good evening, board members and executive cabinet. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk to you about some elementary curriculum and report card updates. I'm going to start with some of our changes to our kindergarten through second grade instructional practices that we're putting into place this year. So if you follow the news or social media or podcasts, you've more than likely heard about the science of reading. The science of reading has actually been around for a long time, but it's resurfaced recently because of concerns and questions about a balanced literacy program and its lack of phonics instruction. Now numerous studies, a couple linked up here have consistently shown that phonics is a critical part of reading instruction. So what is the science of reading? It's not a package or a product or a program. It's essentially what the brain research says about how students learn to read. And the simple view of reading is that decoding coupled with language comprehension leads to strong reading comprehension skills. I really want to note that in Castro Valley, we've had phonics and phonemic awareness curriculum for several years. However, it was time to get a new program that was more teacher friendly and that matched the most up to date practices. So to better align ourselves with the most current research, we purchased UFLY foundations. UFLY stands for the University of Florida Literacy Institute, and that's where this program originated out of. UFLY is a systematic and explicit program that teaches students the phonics and phonemic awareness skills they need to become proficient readers. And in addition to UFLY's, UFLY, we also purchased decodable readers for all of our kindergarten and first grade classrooms because our emergent readers need to be reading books that are aligned with the skills that they're learning in class. So there are three critical areas of decoding. I'm going to get a little granular right now, but just bear with me. So for decoding phonemic awareness, word reading strategies and irregular high frequency words are the three most critical areas. Phonemic awareness is the individual sounds that make up a word. And within phonemic awareness, the two most important skills are blending and segmenting. So blending is putting sounds together to make a word and segmenting is taking the individual sounds apart. So for example, if the teacher were to say to students, we're going to segment this, the word sheep, they should be able to say sh, ee. Conversely, if the teacher says sh, ee, students should be able to blend that sound to those sounds to make the word sheep. Word reading strategies are strategies that students use when they encounter an unknown word. So previously teachers were, were trained to coach students or to prompt students to use context clues, picture clues to figure out those unknown words. And the research is saying, no, the skill that students need to rely the most heavily on, and again, specifically our emergent readers should be decoding. So for example, if a student is reading, gets stuck on the word sat, they'll identify the sounds at when the sounds sat and then say the word sat. And then finally, there's irregular high frequency words. High frequency words are words that are seen repeatedly in print and students need to know those to some level of automaticity because they see them, they encounter them all the time in books. There's regular high frequency words and those follow a decodable pattern, a, sorry, a specific, a typical spelling pattern. And then there's irregular high frequency words and those words don't follow traditional spelling patterns. So for example, if a student sees the word said, if they were trying to decode it phonetically, it wouldn't make said, said, said. The word, the teacher would prompt the student, tell me the sound you hear in the word said. And the student would say eh, duh. The S and the D are making their, are saying their names. Those are phonetically correct, but the AI, and this is this teacher is saying to the students, AI isn't typically AI says A. But in this word, it's saying eh, so we're going to put a heart there because this is the part you need to know by heart. And the reason the research is saying we can decode these is because part of the word is following it. And in the past, we would just use flashcards and say, okay, you got to memorize this. But here's the thing, all of these skills are taught in every lesson, taught, practiced and reviewed in every lesson in UFLY because the brain most effectively puts words into long-term memory when it matches letters to sounds.
I'd love this slide because it took me back to the electric company. I don't know. You never watched the.
I did. I loved the dance. All right. So what are we doing to support UFLY implementation this school year? I want to do a quick pause to do a shout out to Anna Brazil, who is our TOSA slash RTI specialist and who has been pivotal in training our teachers and successively, highly contributing to the successful rollout of UFLY. So we began our training at the August PD Professional Development Day. The K2 teachers, all K2 teachers, including our mild mod SDC teachers were involved in the, an all-day training on UFLY. Then in late August, we had half-day release days where Anna did additional training. And some of the ongoing support that we're going to provide this year are additional release days. So we have some coming up in October. Those we, we made optional if you feel like you need some and every slot was taken. So teachers are really appreciating it. We'll also do more training at the November Professional Development Day. Anna's made herself available to provide in-class coaching. She's already gone in and modeled lessons within the classrooms. And then we'll do observations of other teachers. As, as teachers are developing their skills, we'll, we'll have, in fact, Anna just was recording Vicky Limneos from CVE in doing a lesson in kindergarten to share with other teachers. Before I move to report cards, I do want to show you something really quick. Amy and I literally talked today and I said, how can, this amazing Amy? And I said, how can we make this more user friendly to families on our website? And, and thinking, you know, let's talk about it. Let's think about it. And wow, within like an hour, Amy had all of these things linked on student and fam- and as a parent in our district, this is amazing. These are all click, quick links to things that you need to, to access quickly without having to try and find them. So it makes it so much more accessible. So Amy, you all know is amazing. And then specifically under language arts, I did want to show you that we did update the part of language arts to talk about what we're doing to follow the, the reading science.
Goodbye to Massachusetts, right?
It's adopted, so I can't answer that. But we're using UFLY in kindergarten through second grade. Yes. Alrighty, so I'm going to transition to report cards. And so this past school year, we did a year-long pilot process. And the process began with pilots being shared with every K5 teacher in the district. And based on the feedback we received from those teachers, we made some changes. Then in second and third trimester, we had teachers from every elementary school comprised of K5 general education teachers, DLI teachers, SDC teachers, PE and science teachers. And they piloted these report cards second and third trimester. And what I mean by piloted is they actually use the report cards for every student in your class. And then the parents of the students who were receiving these new report cards, I surveyed all of them to find out what they felt, how they were responding to these report cards. And based on the pilot process, including feedback from parents and, and teachers, we did, we did some, make some changes. Some of them were that we added sometimes as a grading option, and I'll talk about that a little bit more specifically. We developed district-wide learning plans that are aligned to the report cards. Learning plans are, are progress reports. And then we also align the language and progression of essential skills across the grade levels. So some of the highlights of the new report card is that they're aligned to equitable grading practices. In other words, that the, the students are getting grades based on the mastery of essential standards. So bias should not be impacting grading. Each essential standard, sometimes we call them essential skill, but each essential standard will be given a one to four grade based on the mastery of that trimester of that skill. And then we created a comprehensive English language development section so that we could give grades on the mastery of skills specific to multilingual learners. So here are our report cards. This is the third grade report card and on the left side of your screen, every single academic area that, that's been taught, the teacher will give a one, two or a three or four to. This is a one is that the student is not yet approaching grade level standards. A two is they're approaching grade level standards. Three is meeting grade level standard and four is strongly meets grade level standards. This is so specific that a parent can see exactly where their student is successful and where their student needs some help.
Does this mean like in the classroom and grading that happens in the classroom? That we're basically developing a culture that's not using A, B, C, D or E anymore?
Right. And, and a lot, yeah. So elementary has been one through three, but they would just get an overall reading grade, writing grade, math grade. And this is saying, no, we're going to show you where they're doing on each scale because it's a standards-based report card. The second page students will get yet, sometimes, and that sometimes was added because parents said, hey, they're either yes or not yet. What about the middle? And teachers felt the same way who were piloting. So we added yes, sometimes not yet. And they'll get those for SELA bar behaviors, technology, VAPA, and then our multilingual learners will, will be given those grades in English language development. And I wanted to share a little of our parent feedback. 90% of our parents answered agreed or strongly agreed that the one through four grading helped them understand their child's progress in meeting the different grade level standards. And 87% agreed or strongly agreed that the report card was clear and easy to understand. A couple of comments were that the old report card was too subjective. This one's better. And I love the new reporting as it differentiates various levels that give me a better idea of what we need to work on at home. And that concludes my presentation and I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Raymond.
Very briefly, I'm, I'm glad to see that the science around reading is being incorporated. Curious to know, where does this leave the, the, the pages of DIBELS or DIBELS?
DIBELS.
See, I could never pronounce it. So how could our kids? And like the key books, like that sort of things, is that still part of the reading program or, or plan?
Really great question. So DIBELS, we, we use now what's the online version, which is called Acadians. And Acadians is actually aligned with all of this. And in fact, there's a bill coming out or has come out that we have to do dyslexia screeners on all of our students. And Acadians is going to be one of the ones that's approved for that. So it's aligned to all of that. And we're using Acadians data to look at where our kids are landing on these skills. And then key books, key books were, are aligned to write a guided reading and, and I can get, I, tell me if I'm going too deep, but guided reading is, is using leveled texts. And leveled texts are what are called predictable texts. And those are really where students use pictures and things like that to help them figure out words. And the research is saying that's not the best way to teach kids to read. However, there is a time when students should start using those texts, when they're starting to read for meaning. But all of the foundational skills need to be established before we move students into that, into those books.
I'll be really excited, I think, to hear as this unrolls, just kind of what change, what differences you're seeing.
Do you guys want to hear a secret?
Yeah, okay.
So this is so exciting. Well, this is, this is, Anna's a big nerd, but I'm kind of a nerd too. I tell Anna all the time, because she loves reading research. But so we, in it, we aligned our assessments to match all of these skills, right? So there's a decoding assessment in kindergarten and first grade and foundational writing and language comprehension because it's important if we're teaching these skills, we assess these skills, right? And so we're not doing BAS, which is running records on, in kindergarten and first grade. So in this independent elementary school piloted UFLY last year. And so at the beginning of this year, when we assessed our kindergarten and first graders on these skills, independence, decoding of first graders, so last year's kindergarten, right? So they got this program for a full year, where 90% of the students were meeting that standard. The next highest school in our district was in the seventies. So we are seeing, and then Acadians data, DIBELS data, I know I'm going too much, but the DIBELS data is also showing huge strides at independent. Yeah, it's very exciting. It's a very exciting time.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
I remember when it was all about sight words and you know, memorizing the book and telling it back and all of that. And it just seemed a bit crazy. I was at the time, I was like, but you need phonics too. However, I, I, you know, in education, you always see the pendulum going back. I'm kind of like a sight word person myself. My son was very good at sight reading. Just seeing a whole word and knowing it, kind of thing. So I hope maybe after they learn the phonics or the basics of the phonics, there still is some of that, just learn the whole word.
So yes, and, and in fact, those are the conversations Anna and I can get into for hours because there's actually a place for that, right? Like using context clues should be used to figure out the meaning of a word, just not what that word is. So it's blending of those skills, but the, the problem with, so balanced literacy came out as, as a medium between phonics and whole language. But explicit phonics were being taught. And so we're saying, you know what? We have to pause. We have to recommit to really teaching explicit phonics and systematic. But if we do it in kindergarten first and for some second graders, students there are ready to take off with, with other reading, like you're talking about your son.
Yeah, right. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Howard.
So good reports, very interesting. You know, I have to say though, that my first reaction was to see that you're getting educational curriculum out of Florida. We really want to do that.
It's actually a regarded institute.
They don't have a very good reputation, right?
It's not a book that's banned.
My second reaction is I think this is one of the, learning to read is one of the great mysteries of life, I think. I don't even, I have no idea how we do that, how you guys teach that. But you know, now clearly phonics is a, is a key tool of that. And that's easy to sort of grasp and everything, at least at my age, and maybe not when I was five or six. And the last thing I'll say though is, you're not going to believe this, Parveen, you're not going to believe this. I, I remember phonics.
Oh, yeah.
I had an English teacher who was using phonics in the class in the ninth grade. I don't think we would hire her here in Castro Valley. It's unbelievable. But at any rate, thanks for your report. Good luck with it, Ania.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have comments, but do you have comments?
Well, I, I just wanted to say, maybe you can talk a little bit about the process of selecting and piloting all of that of UFLY.
Certainly.
So that everybody.
Yeah. And I had it in my original presentation and I'm like, this is going to be too long because I didn't want to bore you. But to give you some background, Independent had started using it last year. And we're, they were seeing really good results. And our last phonics program, first of all, we had two, we had a phonics and phonemic awareness program. And it, between the two of them, took 45 minutes to administer daily to do it completely. And, and UFLY was able to do it, all of it in 30 minutes. But the, one of the issues with foundations is it was really, it was really hard to implement. And so if a teacher came new to our district, they couldn't just pick up the manual and do it. It took a lot of learning. So I actually went to every kindergarten and first grade class in our district to see what was happening with the implementation of foundations. And I saw there was a lot of variance. And that doesn't work with this type of instruction. So Anna and I had been talking all along about it. She really does know so much about the science of reading. And so she had brought to pilot UFLY to Indy. They were seeing great results. I went up and watched and it was amazing. So as you all know, you can have the best laid plans and really the best curriculum, but if teachers don't buy in, it's not going to go anywhere. So I knew Ania, we talked a lot about it in order. In order to get teacher buy-in, they needed to see it in action. So we arranged for a first, a kindergarten, first and second grade teacher from every school to go to Independent and observe them teaching the lessons. And there was, they were all like, let's do it. They loved it. So, and we are so committed to rolling this out successfully, which is why we have the robust professional development planned out. We don't, we need people to be successful. We want them to like this. And really I'm, I'm hearing as I'm doing, I'm observing, you know, walkthroughs at different schools. I'm seeing the sound walls up, I'm seeing the teachers do it. So it's actually, it's really exciting. It's really exciting.
Just, just a couple of, first of all, she's just amazing at doing this work. And the thoughtful process that you go through and asking and seeing all of that. I want to say something about the report card. That makes me so happy. Because, well, it's because elementary is very different than secondary. So right now, we're working for secondary to get to that place by the end of the year with the one to four and all of that. It's very different. But elementary, like what an amazing thing for a parent to look at the report card and not just see N or S or whatever.
Right.
On reading, well, what part of reading does my child have a, have, you know, is successful? Where do I need to help? So it's just, it really is beautiful. You know, when we talk about mastery, right? Competency based learning, this is, this is what it is. And I just, having been a kindergarten teacher for a couple of years in first grade, teaching reading is a beautiful thing, but it is so important to have a balance.
Totally.
And that's why this is like, I remember I actually had no curriculum. You had to kind of create your own and then came phonics and then we had the open court police. So
I remember.
This has to be at this time, but this actually really engages teachers in the way they teach.
Right. Right.
So thank you so much. This is great.
Well, I want, I want to thank you as well, you know, I, I used to joke with Melissa when we get report cards from Chauvin for the kids, like turn it upside down, maybe we could understand it. They, they, they were just confusing report. I just found the elementary report cards to be really confusing, so I appreciate.
For a lot of blank spaces.
That was weird, like from visual, from a user experience view, you're like, what, what?
Yeah.
So this is great. Thank you for, for that time and effort in that. As someone who's struggled to learn to read, and I think I've shared before, it wasn't really until the third grade that I could read. And it was through a lot of interventions and going to the reading lab. I really appreciate the effort and focusing on phonics here. And I really enjoyed that podcast. If anyone hasn't listened to it, it's, it's a real fun trip. One thing I really, I really struggle with, with ed literature. And I don't want to be wonkish here, but I have a really tough time when I see some of these like academic articles, like where the data's coming from and how they think of these things. And like, what, so why, how did you prove that? I mean, we have a really good data point with Independent and how that program worked. I'm curious to know like how you, UFO, what are we calling?
UFLY.
UFLY. How, you know, do they, do they have like a lab where kids come in and they compare methods and they?
Yeah. They have a lot of data to support everything they're doing. And I can send you specific things after I ask Anna to share it with me.
Yeah, that's, that's cool.
I can, I can get that all to you, but it, it, it's all research based. And, and data, data.
In which it was the contrast to what was at Hawkins, who's the?
Lucy Dawkins.
Lucy Dawkins and her approach that people were like, worst, she just kind of made it up or whatever. So that's really cool. And then this is just my editorial. I hate English. I do not like it as a language, as someone who's struggled to, to learn to read. And I think of a lot of our students coming in and learning a language. It's just, it's not a welcoming language because it's not phonetically based. I, when I lived in Germany, it was interesting. When I was living in Germany, it was at the same time I was learning Dutch and German, which is a very strange thing to do. But both the German language and the Dutch language, they were going through a spelling reform. And it was really interesting. And to think that like, there's these countries that sit around and like, how can we make our languages easier for our people who read them? Like one of the changes they did in Dutch, I loved this change. The word for sticker was de sticker and it was S T I C K E R. And they wanted to make it look more Dutch, so they made it S T I K K E R, right? But, but, but also you read, what you see is what you read for the most part. And I just, I feel so bad for dyslexic kids out there, everyone who's trying to learn our language. I love the technique of the little heart. That sounds very lovely. But I, I think Ben Franklin at one point suggested like, we should move to a more phonetic based English language.
The, the thing is that the, the research does show that there are a good number of kids who learn how to read without explicit phonics instruction. And it hovers between like 50 and 60%. In Castro Valley, it's about 80%. So 80% of our students read without, learn to read without, like with, with the whole language thing. Like get your mouth ready to say the word, use the picture, read to the end of the sentence, see if you can figure it. They do. And so that's the chasm that some teachers are facing is like, but why do we need to do this? Because the majority of my class, but, but here's the thing. First of all, not all your kids, right? About 20% are getting it. And the kids who are learning it, this, this still gives them important skills, like how to spell. So it's a win-win overall.
When we do this kind of work in preschool TK and K.
Yes.
We don't end up with ninth graders learning.
Yeah.
Phonics. Yeah.
Still wish I understood what, what a schwa sound is. What's a schwa?
Someone Google. There, I know how to spell.
Doesn't that mean any?
S C H W.
Sort of like any.
Yeah. But what does it, what does it sound?
I'm totally going off topic. That was a great report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Affy.
Thank you.
I think it's sort of a fill in the blank thing that doesn't, can mean anything. It's not, it means something?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like Danish now or something. Okay. I appreciate that. Now, now my sixth grade English teacher was obsessed with schwas and I just never really connected with schwas. Okay. I thank you very much. Now we're going to have a public hearing. Whoops. Public hearing. We're having a public hearing on the assurance of sufficiency of instructional materials. Public hearing is closed. Yeah, there's no comments. Great. So now we're going to go to the next item, 11D, adopt resolution 16 dash 24 forward slash 25 sufficiency, of instructional materials. This is an action item.
I will move that we adopt a resolution 16 dash 24, 25.
Great. Do I have a second?
A second then?
Great. We have a one and a two. Student board member. It's your, it's your vote. Do you want to vote?
I vote yes.
Excellent. I, trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. It is passed. Let us now go to our personnel report. And I think we've all reviewed it, so we can just do our motions, no?
I move that we approve the personnel report.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
You cannot, can she do personnel? You can't do personnel. You can't do money. Can't do money.
Or not this.
You can do, no, no, you can do personnel, but you can't.
Okay.
Vote though.
Oh, she can do the motion, but she can't vote.
No, she actually, no, not this one on personnel and negotiations, she can't.
Okay.
So or make a motion.
Okay.
But you can, I'll second.
Yeah. Sorry, that was, thank you for trying. So let's go to, let's go to trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. So now let's go to the last one, adopt resolution 70 dash 24, 25, local assignment options. Do I have a first motion?
Yes, you do.
This one, that's also personnel. No, never.
Personnel.
Take it back. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, next week, we'll, we'll practice this.
We'll practice.
I move that we adopt resolution 17 dash 24, 25.
Is there a two?
Second.
Great. And let's vote. Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
See Howard.
Yes.
Vice President Dolly Adams.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Let us now move to board member comments. Do you have any additional comments you'd like to make tonight?
I do not. Thank you.
Good luck with the Mario stuff.
We'll see. Thank you.
I was going to say Fatima actually got to make a motion and all of that last time.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Practice, they just forgot a little bit.
We'll, we're, we're in it together. We'll make it work. Trustee Raymond.
Okay, a few quick things. Number one is that I did just want to highlight that on the consent agenda, we voiced our support as a district for proposition two. And I hope that, I don't know if anyone's listening along or will be, or anybody who might watch our meeting and hears these comments. I hope that you will please support proposition two as well. We need this money, not, not, not just throughout California, but especially right here at home. So please support Prop two. I also wanted to say that I represented the district in a couple of things. Believe that the event at the library honoring Lana Carlos was after our last meeting. I, I was honored to attend on behalf of the district and say a few words at that event. It was really lovely, really moving. Family was there. Forester secured this tree, this really cool tree. And if you guys don't know about the tree, I highly recommend just go take a look. Like it doesn't look like much yet, but it's going to be amazing. It's a sequoia tree. It's going to be a giant sequoia someday. And NASA took the seed for this tree up into this space. I can't even just say, like literally into outer space and, and orbited the moon with it and brought it back. And now it is growing at our library in honor of this wonderful girl who loved the moon and who loved trees. Yeah, it was, it was a pretty emotional event. So I was truly honored to be there. It was past weekend, President Kuziak and I went to the Alameda County Democratic Unity Dinner. That was nice to hobnob with the local politicals a bit and talk about our schools. And that's all, that's all I got.
Thank you for that update.
I just have a couple of things. I was at the Budget and Facilities Committee meeting last week with Lavender and Suzie, Sharon and Parveen. And we did have a really good discussion about the bond business tonight and also about looking at the ins and outs of bonds in the future. Because most likely at some point in some number of years, we're going to want one. But we had a very good discussion about what bonds mean for the district and everything. So we'll be talking about that more in the future, I'm sure. And the other piece is not related to the schools directly, at least, but we did have a very good Senate District Nine Candidate Forum last Saturday morning. You know, we, I think I mentioned this before, we got dumped into a different district, a new Senate District Nine after the last redistricting. And for the last year or so, we haven't really had a senator. But now we had two, both good people candidates who appeared and it went very well. Blaine Torpe did a really excellent job as the moderator. And if you weren't there and you want to see it, it's on the, the Chambers website, which is just, I think Edenareachamber.com, I think. So anyway, you can, you can watch that. It's a very, that's a really important position for us here in Castro Valley. So thank you very much.
I just have a couple of things. I went to the Regional Policy Board meeting, which is the special ed directors and one member from the school board from each of the four districts, Castro Valley, Hayward, San Leandro and San Leandro, San Lorenzo. We did welcome our new Regional Policy Board Director, Yoko Ostrich, if I'm hopefully pronouncing your last name right. Ostracher. Okay, thank you. And then the second thing I did was Castro Valley Education Foundation meeting. Just was there really maybe the first 15 minutes or so because I wanted to also be able to listen to Michael at the time, who was interviewing with the League of Women Voters. So, yeah, which was also quite interesting and good.
Okay.
I just wanted to acknowledge with trustee Howard, I share your frustration about how those lines were drawn for our Senate District. It was actually a very last minute move. I was following that when that was that two or three years ago, when they were making the changes. And it was like within the last 48 hours of the redistricting process that they made that change. And I tried to rally a bunch of people from unincorporated areas in Castro Valley to call. And I actually called in and I said, this is ridicul, you spoke to, it was, it was, and we didn't have any recourse. And we had no, no reason to know that they were going to make that change. And if you want to talk about being disenfranchised on top of the fact that we're an unincorporated community, I think that's, it was pretty egregious. So thank you for your support of that. And it was really fun to see, to get a selfie with Barbara Lee. I, true story, I was on an airplane once and I'm like sitting in my seat and I look over and I see this woman, I'm like, oh. And I said to her, has anyone ever said to you, you look like Congresswoman Barbara Lee? And she said to me, well, I am. And you know, I, I, you know, I tried not to like fanboy too much, like, and I, I really tried to respect her time. And I, I didn't at the time ask for a selfie. So I was very excited to finally see her and do a selfie with Congresswoman Barbara Lee. And then just lastly, I do want to acknowledge tomorrow, the Coliseum will be hosting its last forever game with the Oakland Athletics. I propose that, that I, I do want to acknowledge that it is not an excused absence to miss school for an A's game. So good luck to our teachers, particularly of middle school and high school students tomorrow. And with that, we are adjourned.